Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:28. All mics are recording and we are broadcasting on all platforms.
Oh, that is.
I forgot it. It's on my other tab. I'm gonna weigh you out on this thing.
We have a lot of listening to check.
No, this is mine. I'm sorry, brother. You had to get.
I've only ever heard that before in a commercial.
Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived. I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 28th, 2025 Committee of the Whole to Order. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Alderman Cox.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Present.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderman Natriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer. Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I have accepted motion for the approval of the October 14th 2025 Committee of Minutes.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We accept that. Are there any presentations?
Nope.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I understand there's a need to go to an executive session this evening.
Is that a motion?
Corporation Council, will you please assist me with the appropriate motion?
We're gonna move to go into executive session pursuant to 2C2 collective bargaining matter.
Have a second?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second? Alright, motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Executive session.
Just a reminder, everyone, the mics are hot and we are broadcasting on all platforms.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to reconvene?
Some.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Alright, we are out of the executive session. Next, we have ordinances tabled. The remaining committee, Mr. Clerk, would you please read those ordinances? Is there anyone who would like to remove any of these ordinances for committee consideration?
2025-247, 2025-281, 2025-422.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now for ordinances for committee consideration. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the ordinances for CWLP?
CWLP, 2025-423 is an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 26-0829 Spectral Logic Tape Library Maintenance, three years with Matrix Systems Group, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $56,618.05 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Any discussion?
Move to consent.
Second.
I have a motion for consent and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Thank you.
2025-424, an ordinance approving the agreement with Hanson Professional Services in the amount not to exceed $45,000 for the title and easement services for part of the design of the Interstate Lanesville 138 KV Transmission Line for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for consent. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
2025-425, an ordinance authorizing payment of the North American Electric Reliability Corporation, NERC, fees for the fiscal year 2026 in the amount not to exceed $75,654.27 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent. Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
2025-426, an ordinance approving professional services agreement with a power systems engineering in the amount not to exceed $78,700 to develop a plan for a 10-year long-range distribution planning study for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move consent. Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and...I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Alderman, want a comment?
Yeah, I...is Doug here?
Doug, and I apologize. I meant to email you about this earlier, but could you just give a little bit of background of what the expectations are for this study?
It's at the distribution levels that they're gonna be doing. So, it's looking at, basically, you know, it's a lot of things that we usually normally do. So, it's gonna help prioritize, you know, expenditures on the capital plans, you know, for what improvements we need to make. Sorry.
It's okay.
So, as they do that, that could range from things that might affect, you know, transmission level eventually, you know, for transmission planning, but this is like the first step that they do at the ground level, essentially. And they do that study and then if it reflects anything that they need to do, address transmission-wise, then they will do a transmission study on any requirements that would be needed for that. But, yeah, they're looking at the distribution level. So, what's being supplied, how we distribute electricity to homes and businesses, through our infrastructure at the distribution level.
So, it's...but it is an infrastructure review more than like, like the analysis that we're expecting to come with the IRP?
Yeah, it's not an IRP. It's...
No, no, I know that. I know, but this is just more of the kind of like, what do we need to be planning for, for our...
Correct.
Okay, infrastructure. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Seeing we had a motion for consent and a second, any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Let's have it.
2025-427, an ordinance authorizing amendment to the state of work agreement in additional funding in the amount not to exceed $500,000 with CGI Technologies and Solutions, Inc., for an additional hours associated with the CGI ERP upgrade and mitigation project for the total amount not to exceed $13,169.555 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Any discussion?
Move for consent. Second.
We have a motion for consent, a first and a second. No discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2025-428, an ordinance authorizing renewal of a five-year agreement with Emerson Process Management Power and Water Solutions, Inc., for the West Virginia House Distributive Process Family and Ovation Control Support in the amount not to exceed $602,209 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent. Second.
Any discussion? Motion for pass and consent. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-429, an ordinance approving telecommunications contract service agreement with the Bank of Springfield for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion for passage and we have a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
Public Works.
Passes. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the ordinances for Public Works?
Public Works, 2025-430, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of rock salt from Compass Minerals in the amount not to exceed $268,530 under state contract 25-416-CMS-Boss4-85806 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent. Second.
Any discussion? Having a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
2025-431, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Transportation that motorfield tax funds in the amount of $361,248 may be used for preliminary and design engineering services PE1 and PE2 for the Cokey Mill Improvement Project, MFT Section 19-00486-00PV for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
And thank you for moving this.
Yes, thank you.
Having a motion for consent and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-432, an ordinance authorizing execution of a supplemental number one for the preliminary and design phase engineering services PE1 and PE2 for the Cokey Mill Improvement Project, Section Number 19-00486-00PV with Crawford, Murphy &amp; Tilly, Inc., for an additional amount not to exceed $361,248 for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Having a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-433, is an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at 78 West Fairview Lane for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent. Second.
Any discussion? Motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes.
2025-434, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois and Tina M. Pierce for the property located at 78 Fairview Lane for the Office of Public Works.
For debate. Second.
We have a motion for debate and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion is moved to debate.
2025-435, an ordinance supplementing an agreement with Hanson Professional Services, Inc., to perform preliminary engineering and land acquisition for the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $4 million for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent. Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
Y'all look quick with that, um, tonight. My only question is, before, you know, I asked for this to be on debate, do we have any information on the 19th Street tracks? I've been made aware that there was supposed to be some movement with Hanson in designing, you know, at least thinking about the 19th tracks. Anybody know any information on that? You the man.
Not so fast.
Welcome, Michael.
Thank you.
I defer to you.
Alright, that was easy. Okay, so we've had multiple meetings with the CN Railroad to discuss the overall 19th Street corridor and what their, kind of their long-term outlook on that corridor is. Have had some promising discussions with them that they are interested in potentially maybe abandoning part of that corridor and maybe in the future even full abandonment. We have also, that would require the CN to operate on the Norfolk Southern tracks. We have had some discussions with the Norfolk Southern about that as well. Just one first meeting and that has been it. There is $500,000 of a $10 million grant that the City of Springfield, we helped the city get for the rail project. $500,000 of that is gonna be for a study to look at the overall 19th Street corridor and continue the pursuit of that particular project.
Can I interject right quick? So, I know way back, I was totally out of it then, but I know way back before I ever got here, there was a plan and some studies and all of that that was promised to the east side that we would be doing, just like the Third Street tracks. So, we're gonna use that money to do it again?
So, what this is gonna look at, because the traffic volume for the trains has drastically reduced, there's been a coal mine that's closed, the services for the rail services have also reduced drastically, the opportunity to get funding to do an underpass at both Ash Street and South Grand Avenue is probably very unlikely due to the volume of trains right now.
So, that's...I've been swallowed in that a long time ago, that the community is not gonna get that. However, the tracks are raggedy. When you go over it, you gotta have a good car or truck or something, and that's unfair to the people who live there. They already been told, hey, we're gonna do this, what, 10, 15 years ago, and now they're being told it ain't gonna happen 'cause there ain't no funding there. So, the plan that I seen, that I reviewed, had a nice bike track that, just like the Third Street tracks. Part of my...I'm all for it. I think it's beautiful, but I think it's an injustice for us to concentrate on that and at least not start. I know the talks are in there, but...
Yeah, that's what the $500,000 that the city is going to be receiving out of that $10 million is to begin, basically, a study of that entire corridor to look at all the different options with a strong desire to see if abandonment can't be the long-term solution.
Okay, so, that's fine, thank you. And along with timeframe, how long that will take, but in the meantime, they have to improve the tracks. I just got a note that Alderman Williams passed to me last week about a lady who was trying to use whatever stairs are over there on the Cook Street underpass and can't walk there. We'll be the ones having...I'll be begging Dave to send somebody over there to do it, but it's not our...technically, it's not our property.
No, that is not...yeah, that's the CN's responsibility for maintenance and upkeep of the overall crossings.
Right.
So, what we could, we could help the city and reach out to the CN and just let them know about that.
Okay.
There's no issue with that.
Because it's raggedy.
But that is up, that is up to the CN Railroad to maintain their crossings.
Alright, I appreciate you, sir. Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, well, first off, the other 5,000, it was 10,000. You said we're using 5,000 for this, 500,000 for this...
Yeah, there's 10 total million.
The other five, what happens?
The other amount is gonna go to fund construction on the Springfield Rail Project, the transportation center as well, and part of that will begin construction of the first piece of the bike path along North Street. And then there's the $500,000 for the 19th Street feasibility study. So, that $10 million will cover a multitude of items.
Well, you know, I take it...
That's gonna be, that will soon be coming in front of city council.
So, this was sold as a package? Third Street?
Yes.
10th Street?
It was in...
And 19th Street?
Yes.
Um, now because of, I guess, decreased usage on 19th, maybe the driving force now, but we're gonna take the money that was for 19th Street, now spend it on the other side. I have issues with that. And then, secondly, I wanna talk about the impact of Pillsbury. As you know, we're in the middle of getting rid of Pillsbury, but not the rail. But, yeah, the 19th Street goes through Pillsbury, and whatever we may or may not do in the future on Pillsbury would be impacted. So, what is your timeline on some answers? How long's this study supposed to take to know what's gonna actually happen on 19th Street to find out? Maybe we could still use this other half a million right where it's already at instead of going ahead, putting it on the hub and on Third Street and other places.
So, the half a million is dedicated directly for 19th Street?
Okay, but I asked you, starting off, what is to become of it?
So, what will, the study, what we'll be looking at, when we've talked with the CN Railroad, they still wanna be able to provide services in the Illinois Midland down into the Pillsbury site. The potential abandonment would be south of that court, south of that site, so not affecting that overall site at all.
Do you know how far south does it go?
They would be looking at try to potentially abandon south of Clear Lake. And then there's a, there's two pieces to that, south of Clear Lake and then another piece that is the airline track that goes over Fifth and Sixth Street.
Bless you.
That would, the piece over Fifth and Sixth Street would be more of the immediate piece that could be abandoned sooner. The other piece still provides service all the way down to Kincaid, to the power plant. That's a coal power plant that's still anticipated right from what we've heard, looking at closure by the end of 2027.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. What is the education piece that's gonna be talked about in the community with this? Because like you said, obviously, this is geared in my ward and I'm supportive of it and my colleagues are supportive of it, but I do hear the frustration. And you're the expert to really, you know, give this information out to the community for them to understand and digest it.
So, let me ask this question. Are you talking about 10th Street or 19th Street?
19th Street.
19th Street, okay. As far as 19th Street, what we would be looking at doing, and again, this agreement hasn't come through, but will be forthcoming, we'd be looking at doing a public meeting and public outreach within the community as part of that overall study to see what the desires and for that overall corridor would be.
When will that be? Because the frustration that I hear from Alderman Williams and Alderman Gregory is, this is only coming when this type of money and this project happens instead of it being talked about over time when it was promised almost 15 years ago. Just listening to them.
So, initially, I'll revert back to what the initial plan was. That was underpasses at Ash and South Grand.
Well, let me stop you. So, we heard what you said, that it is a disruption because there's not enough traffic flow, but was that taken to the community so that they knew that or understood it, or it's just like now it's coming out?
We've brought this up before at front of city council.
Okay.
Multiple times. I've stood here and have addressed that.
Has it been taken into the community and had a...
We will be taking that to the community as part of this overall feasibility study in discussing the increase, the, sorry, the decrease in traffic. That's what the study's gonna start doing.
And when you do that, you're asking for public comment to see what people would like to see?
Yeah, definitely.
And then, the movement for, are we gonna see the same type of movement that's happening in my area for over there, how these timelines are working?
Yeah, that's gonna be a shift. When we got, the first initial focus was to get the 10th Street corridor essentially complete. Now that that is complete, we've shifted focus over to 19th Street as well as Third Street to redevelop that piece, so it's just not left abandoned with tracks just sitting there and growing up in weeds. So, our...
Definitely.
We've kinda refocused our full, you know, our effort here, finishing up construction still on the overall project and addressing anything with that, but shifting focus now to 19th Street and Third Street.
And then something else that alarmed me just a little bit, when Alderman Gregory asked you about the steps and us taking it on, and it's not really our job, but you have to help facilitate that so that they will do their job?
That's just some, yeah, that's just something we can do to help reach out to the CN. We know contacts there. We could do that on the city's behalf, that's all.
Okay, and then I guess my...
But it is up to the railroad to maintain their crossings and...
And what happens when they don't? Is that a question for you or for Director Fouts?
Probably more of a question for the director.
So, what happens in that area when we have someone trying to use the steps and they can hurt theirselves and we just need to get some attention over there?
As Mike said, we have, as Mike says, we would reach out to the CN and begin a discussion, and it depends on how dilatory they are.
And what happens, I guess, to what happens, Director, if they're not moving fast enough or they're not giving you answers, then what happens?
Well, then, then we move forward and I guess you could say we're more aggressive, but it is theirs to maintain. And as Mike said, we do have a pretty good relationship with them, so we'd have to have those discussions.
Okay, I'm just wanting to make sure that the same attention that we're getting to the Third Street rail in my ward, that we're giving that same attention when we see that it's a need for some repairs and some TLC, some tender loving care.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chair.
Alderman Rockford.
Yeah, so, Dave, my concern is, is all the way down 19th Street from Converse Avenue, Griffiths Avenue, every one of those crossings need to be, you know, addressed. And this goes all the way down, and I know, and I know they drag their feet. I don't know what kind of pressure you can put on them to get this stuff done, but you take a beating, you know, you have to come to complete stop to go over these crossings. And I just think it's, it's just simple neglect. I don't, I don't know what the urgency is with these steps. This should be urgent. If somebody falls down there and falls into traffic, it gets run over, you know? Who's gonna be responsible? They're gonna come right to the city. So, my, I don't understand when we say we'll have to put more pressure on them. What do we do? Do we not call these people on a daily basis? I know you folks drive, have to drive over. We can't put speed bumps out because we're gonna mess up the fire trucks. Well, this, this, these tracks screw up everybody's automobiles. And it gets old, you know? You go and you, well, you gotta get hold of the railroad, you know? Answer your phone. How do we, how do we go about putting pressure on these people to get these tracks done? All the way across Ash Street, all the way out to Kincaid, to the power plant. How do we go about getting these railroad crossings fixed? You know, I don't know, I don't, I don't know what else to do. You know, we can call all kinds of people. We can, we got connections, but nothing's getting done. Nothing's getting done.
Well, as, as the tracks further south are vacated, I think that would give us extra leverage to have things move forward and repaired.
But my question is, they're being less and less used, okay? I think we were told that there was like two, two trains that come through there a month or something, which is, you know, you can hit it, hit one seven o'clock in the morning, any, anytime you want. But my question is, if they're getting less and less used, get out there and fix them because we still have to cross them all the way down there. So, my, I don't, I don't understand the logic, what's going on, and I don't, I don't think our engineers in Public Works is putting pressure and making the phone calls because something would be done. I just don't think we're putting enough pressure on, on federal government, the railroad people to get things done, because nothing's being done.
We will increase our efforts, sir.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory.
Just real quick, I just had a follow-up question. So, who, who, where does this funding come from for the 19th Street tracks?
For the 19th Street tracks, that is through a grant, a local project grant that the City of Springfield received through IDOT.
Through IDOT?
So, it is through IDOT, yes.
Okay. And that's for the 500 for the 19th Street track. This funding here, Director, where is this funding coming from that we're, that this $4 million that we got in agreement for Hanson?
This is, this is federal money, right?
Coming through Series B.
Through the state, excuse me.
Let me ask, Corporation Council, I, for my people who have this portion of the railroad, of course, we all wanna see it finished. That's important to y'all. But what's not important is a bike lane. Before we even start to do anything with the 19th track, 19th Street tracks, listen, I'm all for it. It goes through my ward too, but that's ridiculous. That's crazy to even do to people and continue to do to people. And I'm crazy if I sit up there and don't say nothing. I can't do it. Murdock, what ability do we have to cut that portion out of, out of this?
Without, without going through the history of this and the grant, I can't answer that at this meeting.
Can you look into that?
Yes, sir.
Chair, if I may, may I move to put this on debate?
Yeah, we have some more, we have some more speakers.
Excuse me.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate these comments and the questions we heard tonight because you're right. That's Alderman Gregory, what was talked about 15 years ago. It was clear. I guess we're gonna find out what the study, the new study says, but the frustrating part from what I've heard this evening is we've had some issues with the crossings, and that should be relatively easy for these companies to correct. And in my experience over the years, it's extremely frustrating to get them to do anything fast. We've heard people come here and complain about weeds taller than me, takes months. And, Director, I know, and I know that your team is doing everything they can to get the railroads to do what they are responsible for doing, but ultimately, if they don't or don't act fast enough, can't we just go to the Illinois Commerce Commission and put a little heat on them?
That's what I want.
Yes, sir, we can. That, that is the next step.
I would advocate that being a part of our arsenal. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Williams.
Yes. You know, the only thing I can tell you is that at Cook and 19th, the underpass is unsafe. Many people have complained, and that's different from the crossings that are going all over, where it goes up or down or a missing big piece of wood and all this stuff. I realize it's not city. I realize it's not Public Works, but what I'm telling you, I don't care if it's no trains going. We have to fix things that are unsafe, and even if they're the feds, in the name of safety, they should be out there. The woman, when she got a hold of me, she thought it was my ward. It ended up being Sean's, is why I passed it to him, but when I looked at it, I could clearly see it's uncrossable. You know, she couldn't use the stairs to go up and then go down. So, of course, they walked in the street that day, but my whole point is, they can't, we have to take care of these things. And then if money is designated for 19th Street, just because we don't have traffic no more, if it's a grant and it's on 19th Street, it should be spent on 19th Street, the whole million. And then you say, okay, we're gonna take 500,000 of it and we're gonna study. And then that's, that's where I get frustrated after the old study. And I'm like, well, what are we studying? But, but you guys are the experts. You need to study again, as I guess things have changed. But but you guys are the experts. You need to study again, as I guess things have changed. You know, I don't know, uh half a million dollars worth of new stuff has changed that we need to look at. But it's time to take some action on Nineteenth Street. If you can't do it, somebody gotta do it. You know, what am I gonna do? I'm I'm gonna try to elevate it up uh uh to to my U S representative and to uh my senator, you know, and and all those type of things, yes. But you guys probably should have been on this report and this safety issue that people continually come and talk about. I know the Aldermen talked about cars getting tore up over Laurel and and a few of those spots and South Grand in particular. So Nineteenth Street has been a problem for a while. Last summer, it was that high, all the way down. It was just, it was ridiculously high that I know it wouldn't have been okay to be up that high on on Third Street or Tenth Street. But because it was Nineteenth Street and it was on the east side of the town, either you guys didn't do your job and push them, because the railroad is acting like they don't care. That's where most of the fly dumping is all along that Nineteenth Street route and abandoned rails. That's that's where the fly dumping is, because it's a cool place where people can go where all that overgrowth is and just stick all kinds of furniture and washes and dry. Just, I can take you today and show you some stuff. It's ridiculous, and we need to start doing something about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any more discussion? We have a
Chairman, uh if he could make a
Yeah, I just wanted to make one clarification for Alderman Gregory. The funding that is for the uh Hanson Engineering Agreement that is in uh up tonight, that is through the I dot Series B funding. That is completely separate than the funding that will be through for the ten million dollars that the Nineteenth Street portion is under. So those are two total different pots of
I appreciate, the only portion, like I just want to reiterate and make it clear, I am totally understand that 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 portion needs to be completed for us to complete this major rail track. But what doesn't need to be done, and I'm like, Murdock's gonna look into it, is this bike portion trail. I I think that's totally disrespectful to the people who live on the east side, who's been promised to do something with the Nineteenth Street Tracks, to go along planning a bike trail. Like, really? That's just, it it's just like, how long we gonna keep looking people in the face and and thinking they'd give for us? Like, come on, man. I I I I, you know, I had to ask that question. I know you're doing your job, Director, you doing your job, and I appreciate y'all for doing that, but we 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 can't have it. We can't go to like this. It'll be another twenty years for something's done on the Nineteenth Street Tracks, and we'll be riding bikes on the Third Street Track. In my ward, I'm all for it. But come on, we we gotta treat everybody the same, and and uh that's just my take, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh Clerk Redpath?
Mike, please say your name for the record.
Sorry.
Mike Mendenhall.
Thank you.
We do have a motion for debate.
We have a motion for debate, a second?
Second.
And we've had discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's against? Who moves to debate? Mr. Clerk, yeah, go ahead.
Twenty twenty-five, four thirty-six, an ordinance authorizing a professional services agreement between Crawford Murphy and Tilly, Inc. with and the city of Springfield for engineering and services for sewer rehabilitation investigation in Ridgely Park, Area Two, in the amount not to exceed two hundred ninety-one thousand sixteen dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion, see a motion, a second for consent. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four four-nine, an ordinance amending Chapter seventy-nine, Section seventy-nine point three oh B of the nineteen eighty-eight Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended revising designated snow emergency routes for the Office of Public Works.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye. Against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four fifty, an ordinance approving Amendment Four to the Local Agency Participation Agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation to reimburse the city for land acquisition with preliminary engineering expenses for the Springfield Rare Improvement Project, M F T, Section nineteen dash State dash zero zero R R.
Move to consent.
Second.
Uh Alderman Gregory, is that?
No, no, that's from earlier.
Okay, very good. Just to make sure. Um so we have a motion for consent and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four fifty-one is a resolution for municipality under the Illinois Highway Code pertaining to suspending motor fuel tax funds on the Springfield Rail Improvements Projects, M F T, Section number nineteen State dash zero zero R R for the Office of Public Works.
Who for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second for consent. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. This move Oh, Alderman Gregory.
I was just gonna ask, is there any bike lanes in this section of this this money, Mr. Mendenhall?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate you. Appreciate you.
All right, Mr. Clerk, would you read ordinances for General City Business?
General City Business, twenty twenty-five, four thirty-seven is an ordinance to approve the appointment of James W. Peters as a purchasing agent for the city of Springfield.
For debate.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion for debate and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion is to debate.
Twenty twenty-five, four thirty-eight, an ordinance approving an increase in the number of Class B liquor licenses by one for the Clear Lake Food and Fuel L L C D B A Clear Lake Food Mart located at thirty-three hundred East Clear Lake.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
Those, uh we have a motion and a second, so any, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing the increase in number of Class B liquor licenses by one for Dirksen Food and Fuel L L C D B A Dirksen Fu- Food Mart located at twenty twenty-one North Dirksen Parkway.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four forty, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class B liquor licenses by one due to the sale of the business by G P M Investments, L L C D B A Jiffy Stop Number five eighty located at thirty-three hundred East Clear Lake Avenue.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four forty-one, an ordinance authorizing decrease in number of Class D liquor licenses by one for the Dew Chili Parlors of America, L L C D B A Dew Chili Parlor Number Two located at four thirty-three Costa Noga Drive and change the location of the existing Class D liquor license located at three oh one North Grand Avenue West to four thirty-three, four three 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 Costa Noga Drive.
Who for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four forty-two, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to the closure of the Red Robin International, Inc., D B A Red Robin Gourmet Burgers and Brews located at twenty-eight eighty-one South Veterans Parkway.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four four-three, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class B liquor licenses by one due to the sale of the business by G P M Investments, Inc., D B A Jiffy Stop located at twenty-one twenty-one North Dirksen Parkway.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four four-four is an ordinance authorizing intergovernmental agreement with the Board of Education of the Springfield School District, one eighty-six in the city of Springfield regarding school safety officers from August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five through May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six.
Who for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four forty-five, an ordinance authorizing payment of to Colin Valenti, a current city of Springfield police officer for settlement of the workers' compensation claim number twenty-five dash W C dash zero zero two five nine three in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand four hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-six cents.
Move to consent.
Second.
Uh any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four forty-six, an ordinance repealing the ordinance two eighty-seven dash zero six dash twenty-three and adopting the ordinance authorizing the signing of checks drawn by the city funds.
Who for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four forty-seven, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with E T N A to provide comprehensive health claims processing and administrative services from March one, twenty twenty-six through February twenty-eighth, twenty thirty, in the amount not to exceed one hundred forty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and what, what, sorry.
E T N A might have an issue with that.
They will take issue with that.
Slow down. One hundred and forty-five million, nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars for the Office of Human Resources.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four forty-eight, authorizing the execution of a uh execution of a four-year contract with Memorial Memorial Health to provide comprehensive near-site clinic services for the city of Springfield retirees and eligible dependents from March one, twenty twenty-six through February twenty-eighth, twenty thirty, in the amount not to exceed two million four hundred seventy-six thousand ninety dollars for the Office of Human Resources.
Consent. Second.
Any discussion? Have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four fifty-two, an ordinance approving Amendment One to the ordinance providing for the issuance of taxable sports complex revenue bonds Series twenty twenty-four of the city of Springfield, Sangman County, Illinois, as amended.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? See a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four fifty-three, an ordinance authorizing subreciprocal agreement number twenty-three dash two zero three one eight six with max out foundation and budgetary transfer for the payment in the amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars pursuant to the community connections from the state of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for the Springfield Police Department.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? See, and we have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four fifty-five, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation and approval of agreement between the city of Springfield and the Karasoff Technologies Corp. for the labor cost and benchmarking software in the amount not to exceed three hundred thirty three hundred thirty-one, five hundred dot, blah blah blah. I'm getting the numbers wrong today. Three hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars for the three-year period.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? See, now we have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four fifty-six, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with MetLife, Inc. to provide vision and basic life and auxiliary product lines and services for the spring, for the city's self-insurance health plan effective March one, twenty twenty-six through February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine in the amount not to exceed six hundred, three thousand, six, six hundred ninety-six dollars and an E T N A to provide dental services in the amount not to exceed one million seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars for vision and basic life for auxiliary benefit for the Office of Human Resources.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four fifty-seven, an ordinance authorizing approval of agreement between the city of Springfield and the Springfield Firefighters Local Thirty-seven of the International Association of Firefighters from March one, twenty twenty-five through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-nine.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? See, and we have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
Twenty twenty-five, four fifty-eight, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a contract number one two two one two three dash D E M from McQueen Equimet L L C for the purchase of one Demmer's M X P one seventy-type apparatus for the amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and two dollars for the Springfield Fire Department.
Consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Older Woman Conley.
Yes, uh Chief. Actually, if we could have Chief Beal too.
D C Dot, come on up.
That's all right, that's okay. I just, Chief, I just want to um again publicly congratulate your department, the police department for working with the fire department. This is a huge moment, and and of course, community relations. I'm sorry, Ethan, I didn't mean to miss you. This is a huge um step forward for our community. I'm thrilled to be one of the cosponsors on this. Um I appreciate our our union firefighters for for coming together and working on this too, which I know will be worked out, but um if we could just, for for this audience, just be, again, a reminder of what this this project is gonna bring to the community.
Absolutely. Um we're excited as well. We all work together as a team, as a community, as a as a city um to bring a treatment-first, transport-second um product. Our idea is to get the right people in the streets uh to hopefully deliver the right care for the people that are in need, whether that be opioids, which is the strong thing driving this with the opioid uh funds, uh mental health crisis, all the things that trickle down off of that homelessness and and whatnot. This is our attempt to try to bring a better product to the city.
And and we talked about this, but the reason this is, I mean, to be clear, we are buying an ambulance.
Correct.
Um fully equipped ambulance with medical equipment, and the reason for that, as as you explained, is because when we respond in this manner, and and there is something that's maybe an uncertainty about about what happens with Narcan um distribution or if someone needs additional help.
Sure.
Um can you just kind of explain why we need an ambulance for that setting?
So you you never know what you're gonna get on these calls. We're hoping that uh bringing E M Ts along with uh with the social workers and and in treating the the people in the field is going to get them the right help. But that's not always the case, and um if it is an opioid issue, uh things can go south very quickly where they're on scene and we can transport if needed.
And we need to be, because we have E M Ts there, we can't just transport them in the back of a minivan.
Correct.
So this is, this is, this is a critical addition to our infrastructure. And and we talk about our first responders, and we talk about that safety. I I'm just, I'm thrilled at the amount of work that you put into this, the detail that went into putting this proposal together, and again, um having our our different departments working together, which is what we should be doing. This, I think this is, this is an important first step um i- in our community, and and again, I want to, thank you. I see Chief Judd still didn't want to, didn't come up all completely. That's, which is fine, that's fine. But but this is what happens when our our organizations within the city, we have this big amount of money coming in, and you found a way to collaborate and work together to bring a response that I I think will be very meaningful for our community. So I just want to, again, thank you all very much. Um and and Ethan, having your your people from that that social work side and and those community connections um is really crucial. So thank you again.
No problem.
thrilled to be sponsoring this.
We're very excited, and and we thank everyone for the overwhelming support for it as well.
Absolutely.
Hang on, Chief. Uh Alderman Gregory?
No, I, you know, this is a great thing. I I I know in our um talks, you know, we we stayed away from ambulance because we don't want people to be confused on what exactly this is um um and and what this is for, so I I I, you know, I I appreciate you, Older Woman Conley. I know where you're getting at, the transporting um ability of that for people who are in need, but um it's not a, it's not gonna be an ambulance. It's it's for a certain need, and I appreciate you with that. My original question to this was, does this include the um graphic work and design as well?
The graphic work?
Yeah.
For the, for the apparatus, yes.
Or it's gonna be wrapped in a, okay.
Yeah, I believe the uh, it was the apparatus, the uh striker lift gate, and then the graphics were all in that number.
Okay, cool. I just wanted to check, and you know, I I I do shout out um, you know, both both our departments for working together. I know um one time I was calling one of the command staff, and they were up in one of the upper cities at an event that that talked about having our our professional firefighters respond to not only mental health calls and things of that nature, so um good work. I know it didn't just pop up this week or in the two weeks, there's been some work in in um involved in it, and so good job, good work, and I look forward to seeing it in action.
And we know we still have a lot of work to do as well, so.
Absolutely. Appreciate you.
Older Woman Otriano.
Thank you, Chair. Um I would like to add my support and actually uh be added as a cosponsor of this. Uh the public has been asking us for uh their nine-one-one calls to be met with the appropriate kind of response, and this is the first step toward that. I'm really proud um that folks at the city um came up with this and are so excited to implement it. I think it's gonna be great for us and um really support the health of our community, which is what we need.
Right, thank you.
Uh Alderman Williams.
Thank you. You know, as one that um really complain when we send the gun and the badge, you know, that was my complaint because that's what I hear from people, instead of sending more appropriate personnel. I want to thank you, and I want to thank the police chief for for, you know, this moving forward. Uh thank the mayor for uh supporting it strongly and helping us really put this together. Also want to mention that, you know, out of the recommendations that came out of the Massey Commission, uh I think it was twenty-some
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, I can't remember how many, but you know, one of their uh recommendations kind of falls in line with some of this, so that we're getting a head start
Right.
on what 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 their asks are about from the county, the city, and the other entities that um we want to make some improvements in this area. So I think we're ahead of the game. I don't think it quite uh hits it on, you know, on the head, but we're we're getting there, and I appreciate you
Right.
for it, and I want you to take a look at that ask that's coming out of the Massey Commission and see how we can tie this all in for it to get even stronger.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Will do then.
Alderman Cox.
Thank you, Chair. I want to echo all the congratulations, the thank yous, what have you. I also want to make sure that Director Ethan Posey is kind of recognized on the record. I know he was a big part of this as well, and all the other stakeholders in the city. It wasn't just the fire department, the police department, you know. And I know nobody else was intentionally leaving anybody out by any means, but this is great. It's...I've only been here eight months, and it's really fun to be part of something that we all agree on, and that we are really moving this city forward. So, thank you again, all of you, for your hard work.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
For consent.
I don't think we had one yet. Can I have a motion for consent?
So moved.
A second. All right. We had discussions. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes.
And I added Alderman Nitrana.
Thank you.
Ready, Chair? Yes.
2025-459, an ordinance approving the salary increases in excess of 5% during the 12-month period for the Springfield Fire Department Command Staff.
Move for consent. Second.
Any discussion? Having a motion to pass and second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion passes. Next, we have unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before this committee? Alderman Gregory.
Yes, I...Last week, I sent corporate...Tim, my boy Tim. I sent him a series of questions for each department of the past year and activities that taken place in my ward. And I just want to let everyone know who received that. Those things are just for educational purposes for myself, so I can educate myself on the things that I need to do in the year or push for, for the year forward, to see where we've been at. And I know we do it on a broad spectrum, but I ask for that to be tailored to Ward Two, so I can take a look at it in depth with my team. So, I just wanted to make that publicly clear. It's not a gig at anybody or anybody's doing anything. And lastly, I'll move on from that. I asked for a few things a while back ago, the letters that had been sent out. We need that information, and who those were sent out to. We want to go out. We want to speak to those people. I know that's economic developments realm, as well as the information on denied cannabis guarantees. We want to talk with them. We want to make sure that we get them the proper things so they can reapply and be ready for February. We ask for those things, and, you know, we...I know I intend to get those. So, again, whatever department's responsible for that, could we please have that? Thank you.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, is that bed here tonight? Is someone representing? No one? Okay. I just want them to reach out to the people I brought up last year...I mean, last week that was denied, the TIF. They deserve...They may have. I'm not saying they haven't. They're not here to find out if they have. If they haven't, I would like them to reach out to those individuals. They have some considerable, different take on things, and I'm trying to get it resolved. Thank you.
I did speak to one of them today.
You did? Okay. So, appreciate you.
Alderman Nitrana.
Thank you, Chair. This is for Director Fuchs. Fuchs, he's still...
Director Fuchs, would you come back to the podium, please? Thank you.
Did he sneak away?
No, he didn't.
Oh, no. There you go. So, I didn't want to bring this up when we were discussing Koki Mill, but every time road reconstruction is on the agenda, folks start asking me about updates on MacArthur Boulevard. So, I just wanted to know if you had any more information for us on the reconstruction of the Boulevard.
I have no additional information from the last time we spoke. I know IDOT is proceeding with their engineering plans right now, but if there's something in particular that you're interested, you're certainly free to communicate with me, but I don't really have any updates since the last time we spoke with them.
Okay. So, they're currently in engineering to fix the drainage problems along.
That's part of it, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. And if you would just let me know or let us know once we're one step closer to that project.
We actually have a...Our annual meeting with IDOT, I believe it's next week with District Six, so we'll certainly make sure that we talk about that.
Great, great. And if you could bring up Sixth Street around north of the Interstate Interchange, there's a rough stretch there up to Stamford Avenue. I've been asked about that as well.
From the interchange?
Yep, north to Stamford.
To Stamford. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Alder Woman Conley.
Thank you. If you could just make sure that maybe the whole council gets an update on what's going on with MacArthur when you talk to IDOT.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Any more unfinished business? Seeing none. Next is new business or any new business to come before the committee? Alderman Gregory.
No, this is a good thing. I promise you that. But, you know, I'm excited to see about the email we received today from CWLP on the 90th anniversary of the lake. I think that's big. There's going to be some excitement. And, you know me, I'm a history guy. In Springfield, as day by day, you learn new things. And that beach has some history to it. It goes back to, what, the 1930s if I'm not mistaken? And, you know, it wasn't until '52 that we all could swim together. So, as we celebrate and we teach those things, I hope that we remember that we tell the whole story, that, you know, Bridgeview and what its purpose was. I was reading a story about a Miss Barton, you know, who can remember her dad taking her to the lake and not being able to swim, and demanding that they go back to Bridgeview. So, those things are important because those people still live. Those families still live here in Springfield, and they will go visit the lake, and they won't have those same experiences. So, those things are important, and that's what they will remember. They'll go around to Bridgeview and share some of those memories. So, I think that's important. I think it's exciting for our community to celebrate the 90th birthday, and I look forward to coming on out. Thank you.
Alder Woman Conley.
Thank you. Alderman Gregory, you and I are thinking a lot alike tonight. I was going to mention that, too. But since you handled it beautifully, I will just add, we're moving into like the season of my favorite holidays. Halloween is this Friday. Just to remind everybody to be careful of kids crossing the streets. They're going to be hopped up on as much sugar as I hope they can collect, so please be careful. Watch for the kids. Have a great week. Have a great time trick-or-treating. And, yeah.
The hours?
We...What is it? 4:30 to 8? Is that right?
Yes.
Yes, 4:30 to 8 on Friday. Put your lights on if you have candy. If you don't have candy, leave your lights off. And everyone, please respect the people who don't have their lights on. Yeah, very much looking forward to it. So, happy Halloween, everybody. And if I can, just real quickly, I also just want to add, and I'm sorry, I've...I think we've...A lot of us have...Really, we've been distracted watching what's going on in Peoria this week with the Massey trial. And I just want to, again, publicly send out prayers for the Massey family, because what they've had to sit through this week has been extraordinarily traumatic and difficult. And no matter what the results of that trial are right now, I just saw that they've ended deliberations for tonight, but I just want to send our thoughts in first to the family, because this is something that is a nightmare that no family should have to go through. And thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Now, it's time for citizens who request to address the committee. Are there any citizens who wish to address the committee?
Aaron Cahill.
I remind all speakers, just be mindful of the monitors. Five minutes. Mics will be shut off at five minutes, and I'll gavel at five minutes, so let's just have a smooth...
I think you're going to have to restart his clock.
Public comment section.
Yeah. Where'd my time go? There it is. Hey, guys.
Good evening.
Yeah, I came very unprepared tonight. I've been a busy dude today. But I do want to say that deliberations began today in the Massey trial. They ended up having to hold overnight, so they'll be back at it at 9:00 AM tomorrow. I know a bunch of folks will be out there offering their support, providing their support. So, just keep the Massey family and everyone involved in your prayers, please. Also want to give a shout out. I know it's not one of our officers, but Deputy Farley, for telling the truth on what happened on the stand. Obviously, none of it's televised, so I didn't see everything, but I've been keeping up with it on Twitter. And, you know, when you're involved in a situation of that nature, it's important to take your time and remember the facts correctly and not make things up on the fly. And that's an important aspect of, you know, not just law enforcement, but it can be a piece of all of our lives, you know? Don't make up some BS just because you don't know. Find the answer, you know? That truck that we're getting for the fire department, I'm happy we're getting that. I do urge the fire department to really do their research on the different types of social workers that are out there. I know my wife does it for a living. She's a master's with...master's in social work, and it's a challenging job. And I've been a proponent of social workers going out with the fire department, not police department, as it's not a police matter, it's a health matter. I did a lot of mental health calls when I was on a volunteer fire department in South Mississippi, and those are the most memorable calls that you'll have as a firefighter, in my opinion. You know, it's good to feel like you're doing something for the community when those kind of things arrive. So much of a firefighter's job is...I hate to put it this way, but I stub my toe at 3:00 AM, you know? Blood pressure calls, lift assists. And while those are important aspects of a firefighter's job, being able to actually say, "We actually helped this person," that's something you don't get every single day as a first responder. So, being able to do that, you know, I'm glad we're putting forth that money. I'm happy that y'all are talking about putting that through. That's something we need. We need more mental health services in this city. And we can't always just strictly rely on the hospitals, you know? If we can meet them where they are with their mental health crises, we can potentially prevent suicides, homicides, somewhat unnecessary hospitalizations, because not everybody going through a mental health crisis needs hospitalized. But you take them to the ER, and that's what they're going to do. They're going to be put in a 72-hour hold in the ER. They're going to be stripped of their belongings. They're going to be put in a hospital gown, and they're going to be put in an area where any nurse there can keep an eye on them, because unfortunately, we don't have beds for mental health crisis. And the ER is not specifically designed to aid in mental health crisis. So, you'll lay in a bed or sit on a bed out by the nurses' station for 72 solid hours. They'll feed you. They'll give you your drink, but you won't do anything alone. You'll go to the bathroom. There will be somebody with you, you know? And if we can nip that in the bud out on the street, we can help people. So, want to thank you guys. Y'all have a good one.
Thank you.
Ken Pasha.
Bit of a frustrating day. Been in Peoria all day. My voice is shot, so y'all have to excuse me. Was really hoping I'd get to come up here and say the word's guilty. Still hope I do. Really hope he's guilty. I think all of you do, too, for various reasons, I'm sure. Maybe not the same ones, but I think we know what happens if he's not. Doesn't mean the work's not done, though, or doesn't still need done. I heard the word "thoughts and prayers" up here for the family. I want your thoughts and prayers. I want you to do something about the conditions that created the murder of Sonya Massey. I want you to listen to the Massey Commission. They wanted you to attend last night, the final session. They would like you to know what those recommendations were, all 26 of them, because those are the kind of things that they've spent a year working on. Considerable amount of money and time has been put into that. A lot of great minds, greater than all of ours even, when it comes to a lot of these topics, have put a lot of work into this. And if you really want to give something to that family, give them real change. Give them something like a city ambulance service that's actually going to help people instead of relying on private enterprises that sends out thousands of dollars in bills. Give them real harm reduction. Give them access to mental health care and resources that come from a place that the budgets aren't spent on overpolicing, on a rate of five to one traffic stops. What is that helping? It's not helping anybody. Overpolicing has been proving to not work over and over and over again in every city around this country, because it leads to the same violent outcomes everywhere, from precinct to precinct, from department to department. It doesn't matter, because those are the same things that we see everywhere. And it's up to you guys now as a city council to listen to what the Massey Commission has given you. Don't just think it's county. Don't just think about a donut hole or a way to avoid that kind of responsibility, because we've heard that from this chamber. And I don't think that's going to be acceptable for anyone anymore, because whether or not Sean Grayson ends up his life in prison or walks a free man and lives in fear, as he should, for the rest of his life, you guys still need to listen to what was said by the Massey Commission, by the people in the community. Come out to the listening session, show up to the town halls. This shouldn't be something where I only see a couple faces at that Massey Commission meeting. This is the final one. How hard would it have been to come out? I only missed one the entire time. I know some of y'all got much better lives than me, much more free time, but I still took time out of my day. I still get off work, late, tired. They go, "I don't want to go home." You think I have to spend it all day rallying for Sonya? I don't want to go sit down. That's not how it works, man. You chose this job. Now, do something about it. Stand up for the people out there like Sonya, because that's what happens when we don't. I had a city employee today tell me about two unhoused women outside, and their stories broke her heart, and I'm sure they'd break mine. And the simple fact is, is when we talk about like a landlord registry that Roy proposed, I need you to understand that Milwaukee, who started with that registry, has zero homelessness. Not nobody, but their system is so solid, people don't go more than 48 hours. That's a pretty solid system, because guess what landlords want? They want tenants. They want that money coming in. And what are people who have a chance to get jobs and housing going to provide them? And if we provide a quality system based on providing quality residences with quality landlords, we will find that those unhoused situations won't happen as much, because both of those women were out on that street because of domestic violence, abusive situations, and their own mental health and their own frustration. And what do we have for them? Not a lot, not as much as we should, not as much as we can, not with all the money that flows out of these chambers every week, millions of dollars. And we hand over, what, half a mil? Think that's going to solve a problem? Think that's going to get people off the street? Are we being realistic here? Are we just trying to put a Band-Aid on this and act like we solved an issue, because it's not directly in front of our faces anymore? Sonya Massey was murdered. She's going to die regardless...She's dead regardless of whether or not Sean Grayson gets the...we get the justice we deserve if Sean Grayson is convicted. And that's what we have to remember. That doesn't stop what happened. It doesn't change what happened. It doesn't fix the anger in this community, the frustration. You guys see it every week, and it might get tiring, but how tiring do you think it is for the rest of us? I've spent my life dealing with these kind of issues. You know how many protests I've been to in my...I don't even know. You know how many dead friends I've got? I don't even know. And it's tiring, because here we are again, having these discussions, and it feels like not everybody wants to be a part of the conversation. So, I really hope that I see all of you any two seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Pasha.
I see all of you at the town halls and the community sessions that we have coming up, because if not, then they will be coming up next in these discussions where it happened.
Mr. Clerk.
Ellis Ramey.
Ellis Ramey. Hold the microphone down, please. Thank you.
I thought my voice was loud enough. I have two things I want to say, maybe three. One is that I do believe that IEDOC is doing a very good job on Ninth Street, and they did help me, because I had a little problem on Ninth Street. And it's something that you need to look at, the people that are working, their attitudes, the way they present themselves. Just like what that man said, we need to be more in tune to people, especially if they want to be in tune to us. Respect each and every one of their feelings like we're supposed to respect the five-minute thing here. Second is that I had the firepeople out to the house. My sister fell. And we have a gentleman that will not cut his trees, or trim them back, because they got nuts on it, black wallets. It's been going on since '09. And that did not work. And then I get a phone call from a very good friend that works at Snooks on Sangamon Avenue. She was attacked by the Pit Bull. And I called and got the stuff taken care of. But when you come here and you tell this place, these people, that people voted for you to help them to solve some problems, or help them with what they need to get their house fixed, or whatever, you expect them to do their job. You expect them to call you back. But when it comes to a citizen making the phone call and getting it done, I think is a little bit more unnecessary, because we shouldn't have to do that if we voted for you to be on here, to help us maintain a certain stability of our city. So, respect is got a big word, and it has a lot of meaning, and it's how you represent yourself. And I think it's time that each and every one of you look at yourself, because it's very hard to see what's going on. Everybody talks about the firepeople. Hey, I'd rather have a fireman to come to my house and help out. And they did help my sister, because she was very nervous about her back. So I do want to thank them for that. And I want to thank the police department, because they did go out and take care of that for me. But we need more people in tune to what's going on, the ones that we vote in to do our job, their job. And if they don't, then vote them out and get rid of them. Just like on this landlord's being out of state. I had to call a landlord out of state five times until I got ahold of her, and she wasn't happy what I said to her. But she got the job, and she got it done. But if you have to be a citizen to do it, then we need to be paid for it. Thank you, and I hope everything turns out all right for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Bree Roberts.
First, I want to thank those of you that attended the Massey Commission meeting yesterday. It was really nice to see your faces out there. It was a really short meeting, but I think we got what we needed done within that time. And as a commissioner, I just want to ask that when you are presented with the recommendations, I really hope that you take them seriously, because we dedicated so much time and energy on this data and on these recommendations, and they're not just coming out of nowhere, it's coming from education. So please, do your diligence, do not make our work for nothing, and consider them so Springfield can improve the way that it needs to. Also, I want to talk about the SNAP benefits that will be paused, or potentially paused in November. And start by asking if any of you have experienced what real hunger feels like? Because if you haven't, I can explain. It makes your stomach feel like it's eating itself alive. The pain is so deep, it makes you double over. There's a fog that clouds your mind, because your body is running on empty, and you cannot think of anything but food. Hunger becomes the only thing that you think about as you feel a desperation, an emptiness, and a fear. Sometimes surviving off of drinking tap water just to convince your body that there's something there. Eating a nap for lunch, because that's all you can do to escape the pain. Not knowing where your next meal is going to come from. Having five children in a house, and knowing that you're only going to be able to feed them ramen, and you're not even going to be able to eat it yourself. So for another night, you go to sleep hungry, and at least you know your children have something to eat. This is the reality of at least 38,000 Springfield citizens right now. That is an estimated number, somewhere around 35,000 to 38,000 people that are on our SNAP benefits as of last year. And 83% of those people are belonging to households where at least one person is working. So an argument that, well, just get a job so you can afford food, is not an appropriate argument. Right now, Springfield and its citizens are at risk of experiencing mass hunger. Not because of something that they have done, but because programs that are meant to protect them are being paused while grocery prices have risen faster than paychecks. Food prices have increased 23.6% over the last five years, and just within the last year, about 4%. Nationally, 100,000 people in our area do not know where their next meal is coming from. Our food bank is the last safety net, and there are conversations of cutting funding for that as well. The Central Illinois Food Bank distributed roughly 9.3 million pounds of food last year, serving around 7.3 meals, oh, sorry, million meals. Yet, demand has surged 30 to 40% since 2023. As of last week, people are noticing wait times as long as 40 minutes extra just to get into the food bank, and it's not even November yet. For every meal provided through SNAP, it is assumed that food banks must cover seven when benefits are cut. Seven times more food, funding, and volunteers, all while donations and budgets do not move. This is not sustainability, and this is a reality that we could be facing within the next, starting in the next week. We need to recognize how interconnected certain struggles are, like a lack of rent control and a landlord registry, predatory landlords prying on people who already cannot afford anything, a lot of them being SNAP benefits, and now their access to food is being taken away? And there's worries of food riots instead of discussions of how to fix this? Citywide food pantries, food initiatives, school lunch program initiatives? I don't know if there has not been any discussion about it, or if I just have not seen it anywhere, but I don't think there is enough, if I haven't seen it, because I'm usually pretty up to date with everything. There are going to be people starving, and hungry people will do anything. And if you are worried about a riot, more than you are worried about a child getting their next meal, finding some space within our budget to pay the people, or to feed the people that put you in these positions, that are humans, that live in Springfield, that's an issue. Food over riot gear.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you. So in my daytime job, today, we had a meeting, and it's, the cost is about $350,000 a week for SNAP. There's discussions.
I believe him.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? It's about $350,000 a week to cover the cost right now. The state is talking about it, and we're having some long nights there in session right now, they're in committees. I'm hoping to hear more of those decisions, but it has to start at a state level and work its way down. And we're very aware that people's SNAPs will be cut November 1st. We have had discussions with the Illinois Food Bank to see what we could do for Thanksgiving, as we know a lot of people will not have meals. Me as being a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated and other Divine Nine members, they come together, we have a list. This past weekend, we just did something at County Market with the unions, where we were able to give out food, and people purchase food for those baskets to be given out to the underserved population throughout the schools. So there's a lot of conversation happening. I know sometimes this information does not get out, and I'm always preaching about education, but I wanted to say that today, because in my daytime job, that was what was clearly made distinctive, that that's how much it will cost us right now, and we can't do $350,000 a week to cover our whole entire state. But we do think with those rural areas, that that will bring some function, or it will bring some serious conversations to the table, because sometimes we know it's two, two sides of the fence, but this is one common goal that the other side would not want to see, and our side would not want to see. So this is something that may be common for us to work on together. So I'm hoping that it's a good outcome before they leave the Capitol this week. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Eric Reese. Eric Reese. Roy Walton.
Hold up a minute, Roy.
Oh, okay. Just a second.
Clerk, can we just get the clock there, or?
We're going to.
Okay.
Okay, Roy, go ahead. Hello, my name is Roy Walton. I'm pretty sure a lot of you know. When I first stepped up here, I had an issue, but it was already addressed, and I had a chance to discuss it with somebody. So now, my next thing is, like, government or community involvement from the city. Because we just had a tragedy in the city where a nine-year-old child was killed, 21-year-old young lady, and another unfortunate individual. But I did not see none of y'all faces except for a couple of the aldermen in support of those families. But soon as a gunshot go off, we got 50 officers in our community. That's sad. Y'all sit up here and talk about passing out millions for fire trucks and rave vehicles, but who posted a flyer in condolences to those families about those kids? This is sad. It shouldn't take us two hours in certain wards to get a response from the police department about an accident, or, but we made a phone call about a white lady getting robbed behind County Market, and then, less than seven minutes, we had 30 officers. This is a problem. I usually come up here and cut up about the unprofessionalism. But right now, I'm up here to talk about a way to get community involvement from the people who it should be important to, as they took these roles to participate in these acts, to make us feel safe, to make our community safe. Or at least, that's what they tell us when we, when we phone them in. But I have not seen not, nobody's face saying, hey, if the family needs support or our condolences, nothing. I didn't see not one alderman, other than the ones that come from that area, outside the funeral. But I've seen police cars parked, looking for people with warrants. Come on, man, it's sad. It's sad. That's terrible. Because if it was one of y'all kids, it'd be a whole parade behind it. If it was one of y'all loved ones, if it happened in y'all ward, it'd be new laws made about it today. It wouldn't take no time for y'all to put something on the books. So I just want to say, I asked a long time ago to have a sit-down with the appropriate people, I ain't even got the energy to spaz out today. But it's needed. Everybody who feels some type of way, or feel that that's not important because it's not affecting them, it soon shall be, just like with these SNAP benefits. It don't affect y'all because y'all got nice paying jobs, and y'all probably don't get SNAP. But just wait until they do it, and y'all have floods and floods of phone calls that y'all can't respond to, because they're going to be in such an abundance for robbery, thefts, the crime rate is about to go up. So I hope while y'all think it don't affect y'all, it will. Because when they can't get it from their own communities, they will be to y'all's, to burglarize y'all houses, break in y'all cars, steal y'all groceries, because ain't nobody going to be out here hungry. Survival is key. And whatever it takes to survive, people are going to participate in. So I hope y'all paying attention, and y'all need to reach out to them families. And for everybody who does show their concerns, I'm not going to call no names, y'all know who y'all are. Once again, like I said, I commend y'all, and thank y'all for y'all concerns. But everybody else, y'all need to pay attention, because it's coming. Thank y'all for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. Next clerk. Lori McKeon.
Good evening. My statement tonight is in response to Doug Brown's panel discussion at the Citizens Club last Friday morning. I want to be clear that my statement's not about Mr. Brown, but my concern is about how you, the city council, should be using your responsibility for oversight of CWLP. I'm going to repeat some of Doug Brown's words, but my comments are directed to you. While explaining CWLP's solar efforts, Mr. Brown explained that the bond on Dalton Four will be paid off in '24. I think most people know that. He then said that CWLP needs to have a plan in place by 2035 to 2037 to be prepared for the Dalton debt payoff. The idea of waiting until 2035 to create a plan is confusing and disappointing, and drove me to make this statement tonight. I know I've said a lot of much of this before, but based on what I heard about this 2035 date, I wanted to speak again. Mr. Brown also explained that an IRP won't be able to give that, that plan, because it's an economic assessment. That's true, an IRP is an economic assessment. The 2018 IRP report has a list on page 15 that contains items that the completed IRP report should include: demand forecast, assessment of supply-side generation resources, an economic appraisal of renewable and non-renewable energy, and finally, an action plan. So it's helpful to understand the concept of a 20-year long-term plan versus a shorter five-year, five-year term action plan. So the projects in the, the shorter-term action plan work towards the 20-year goal. On page 70, the IRP report says CWLP should also consider its risk tolerance and reliability thresholds before making any, any decisions. The intent, then, is that the recommendations, those economic assessments in the IRP report, are to be combined with the local risks and tolerances to create an action plan. The report continues, "Having a long-range resource plan enables CWLP to provide affordable, reliable electricity to the people it serves well into the future." We can't wait until 2035 for this long-term plan. The purpose of an IRP is to gather enough information and data to work towards that long-term plan with a five-year action plan, those projects working towards the longer goal. The action plan should be updated every five years with data from a new IRP that assesses new technology, changing resources, and construction costs. Right now, that long-term goal obviously should be for CWLP to be at zero emissions by 2045, and it needs a accompanying action plan that has the projects to take, take over the next five years for that transition. So waiting until 2035 to make the plan for zero emissions clearly goes against the recommendations in the 2018 IRP. It needs... It needs to be done incrementally with minimal rate hikes to avoid the increases we're seeing in water bills. So in a city with a municipal utility, you, the City Council, provide the oversight and the regulation that the state has over investor-owned utilities like Ameren. So you can and should provide direction on the transition to clean energy because the state law requires zero emissions by twenty forty-five. You can make sure Springfield is fiscally responsible in making this transition. This is too important to kick the can down the road like previous councils did with the water rates. So on a quick change of topic, um, I want to mention data centers. Um, our coalition, the Coalition for Springfield's Utility Future, is holding an informational meeting about the proposed Sangamon County Data Center tomorrow night, October twenty-ninth, at six P.M. in the Carnegie Room at the library. Our coalition is going to explain the facts we know about the data center and explain why the voluminous unknowns about this project and the lack of public input warrant public input meetings on the scale of a no CO2 pipeline meetings and a one hundred and eighty-day moratorium on data centers at the county level. I hope you can all attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Jay.
Uh, good evening. I'm the APSME staff representative for our three Springfield locals. Um, I'm here tonight with a number of members of Local Thirty-seven Thirty-eight, which is our downtown conglomerate. Uh, before I take my time, I'd like to let them speak, city employees, if that's okay.
Yeah.
They, they can each have five minutes, so we'll have to restart Mr. Jay when we're ready.
Then.
Your city employees, you get.
Hold up, we gotta restart it now.
I've got some handouts for the council.
Sure. Are we good on time?
We're good.
Nope, maybe not. Hang on, hang on.
Hold on, I was, uh.
Hang on, hang on.
Sorry.
All right, go ahead. All right.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I was sort of informed that as a city employee, I'd get potentially longer than five minutes.
It's five minutes.
It's just five minutes?
It's five minutes.
Okay. All right, um, well, then, uh, my name is, as you might have guessed, Lilith. And as you might have also guessed, I'm a librarian over at Lincoln Library. Uh, I'm also a proud steward for APSME Three-Six-Three-Eight. Um, a union whose members don't have the visibility of our sister unions and as a result, not everyone understands what it is we all do. Uh, I'm just as guilty of that, however. What exactly does a foreman at, uh, Oak Ridge Cemetery have to contend with on a given day? What does a buyer at the Dahlman Power Plant have to purchase other than, I would assume, coal? Uh, is what crime scene analysts do just as tricky as what you see on shows like NCIS, CSI, Law and Order, et cetera? I don't know, so I won't try to speak to what they go through. Instead, let me give you a rundown on what it's like to be in my shoes or those of the thirty-five other APSME members who work at Lincoln Library. A frequent response to hearing what my job is, is, oh, that must be a nice, quiet job. And my response is always the same. I laugh. A lot of people think I get to sit around all day and read books, uh, and occasionally help people find books themselves. The truth is librarians have some of the most complex and demanding jobs, straddling a line between geek squad agent and social worker. It is the most mentally taxing job I have ever had, and that's saying something. In addition to working at three different libraries in my life, I have also worked as a seasonal employee at a state park for three summers. In my time cleaning bathrooms, trails, campsites, and just patrolling in general, I encountered less people engaging in lewd acts than I did at any of the three other libraries that I've worked at, especially Lincoln Library here in Springfield. I don't have to worry about broken glass, half-buried in fire pits that I'm digging out anymore, but I do still have to watch my hands because discarded needles and sharps have been found in the bathrooms, on the floor in our computer lab, and tucked into armchairs. Uh, probably the one thing that is consistent between my, those two jobs is the number of people who, drunk as skunks at ten A.M., verbally threaten me with violence for not bending the rules for them. It's not just threats, though. As police reports will tell you, things sometimes escalate beyond words. An officer responding to a distressed call from a patron was sucker punched in the back of the head by someone completely unrelated to the first incident a couple of years ago and had to fight his attacker to the ground. In response to being asked not to eat in our computer lab, a woman began hurling racist slurs before hurling her bookbag at me, breaking an acrylic barricade and hitting me in the face before being forcibly restrained by library security and multiple police officers could arrive on the scene and take her away. Chairs have been thrown by people at other people. We've had patrons out of the blue loudly threatened to stab other patrons or blow up the building or do all kinds of other violent acts. It's bad enough that in a conversation between two members of library staff about a knife guy, specification had to be made about which knife guy they were talking about. An incident doesn't even have to be violent in order to leave a scar. I have had patrons, plural, come up to me and tell me they were thinking about killing themselves. Even for someone who has special training in how to respond to that, which we don't, by the way, the question is like being handed a bomb where, where if you're not careful, it'll go off and someone very well might die because of your carelessness. I've had to listen to fully grown men, having been in prison for the last thirty years, break down in tears because technology and society have moved on, leaving them so far in the past they can't even begin to comprehend what to do or how to go about doing it. So many people have told me they have cancer and that they're either trying to find a doctor or how to write a will or are desperately trying homeopathic remedies because medicine has failed them, that hearing it anymore has no effect on me. There have been mornings where people have died due to drug overdoses, uh, outside of our building and library staff has been expected to keep our chins up, to not discuss it with patrons and pretend that it is business as usual. Is it any wonder patrons frequently say how frightened they are of coming in or how afraid they are of bringing their kids in? But that's the thing, isn't it? Every morning, the library staff, we get up, we come down, and we go to work, not for the benefits and definitely not for the pay, but for the people who don't have anywhere else to go and the ones who aren't too scared to bring those kids in. We, as library staff, are also members of the lowest-paid unit in the city. City has no issues giving the garage workers enlightenment of fair pay increase and when negotiations started, they didn't with us. But now suddenly, they do.
Thank you.
I have a point of order, Mr. Chairman. When you step up to the mic, could you please say your name, please, because we, we need it on the record?
Lilith Knox.
Thank you.
My name is Sheila Hunter. I am Vice President of APSME Local Thirty-seven Thirty-eight. I've been with the city going on twenty-seven years. I am not the only one who has a long term in this local. There's some that have been here over forty years. When, although there's various union locals that are represented in the city of Springfield, we're gonna talk about the clerical, technical, and professional unit. While the work we may do is not visible on the road repairs or the maintenance or responding to scenes of accidents, writing the checks so employees can get paid, mowing overgrown lawns that are reported, doing contractual work, keeping the electricity up and running, or fixing water main breaks, this list can go on and on. Our members touch at least fifteen departments of the city of Springfield, such as the Police Department, Dahlman Power Plant, Public Works, Lincoln Library, CWLP Commercial Office, Oak Ridge Cemetery. This is just a few. For examples of our local, what our local does, let me give you just a small list. We create work orders for the work to be completed. We get work orders for contractors so they can do their work, track information for those contractors, handle time sheets to assure people get paid, especially their overtime, guide visitors that come to our city, answer the phones in various departments, help people to understand their water and electric bills, order supplies to keep the offices running smoothly and efficiently, work at the library to ensure people are safe to get their books and have access to computers or go out and get permits, um, for the events that go around in the downtown area as well as work orders that they are needing done for the downtown area. This is just a brief list of many necessary tasks that our local does. Just because we aren't labor-intensive aspects of the work that some of the city, other city departments do, does not mean that we're not important. Because without the services of our local provides, the other departments would be unable to function effectively and efficiently. Just because our local consists of seventy percent women does not mean that we are not worth a responsible contract or reasonable pay. And just because we choose this line of work doesn't mean that we are less worthy when bargaining for a fair compensation. This local is in the necessary part of the process for a lot of the city departments to do their jobs and we would appreciate the same recognition of worth that is shown to other city departments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Hi, my name is Amy Washington. I am the president, president of APSME Thirty-Six-Three-Eight. I am here tonight to represent all one hundred and forty-two of my members of the Thirty-Six-Three-Eight. The work that is done behind the scenes come from the members of Thirty-Six-Three-Eight. For example, the service reps and billing techs in the commercial office send work orders to the electric and water departments, letting them know what work needs to be done and what address residential and commercial. These same service reps are the ones talking to customers through power outage and main breaks. Our cashiers handle every payment our mail clerks collect and process the mail coming and going. Oak Ridge Cemetery, our members out there, they're the ones who get our deceased loved ones that are being buried out there. They are the ones digging the graves, setting up the burial sites, filling in the graves once a funeral is over. They maintain the grounds all year round to make them stay beautiful. This is the part of everybody we do not see. We have a member who handles all the road closures and bag meters. So for trunk and treat yesterday, the Route Sixty-six car show, every single parade and food truck goes through her. Members at the Police Department that assist with traffic accidents, blocking and directing traffic. Thirty-Six-Three-Eight has members at the front desk assisting officers and the public, typing reports, filling FOIA requests, et cetera. Thirty-Six-Three-Eight is in every office of the city except for three. That is the Mayor's Office, Human Resource, and Legal. The hundred and forty-two members of Thirty-Six-Three-Eight are the backbone of the city. We are the administrative and clerical that keeps it flowing. And due to us choosing the career path that we, where we don't dig holes or climb poles, we are being discriminated on. Whatever happened to the women of the community was seventy percent of Thirty-Six-Three-Eight being women. And some of us, single parents, others of us have to depend on a second job just to make it. But for the other fellow brothers and sisters who can get the raises that they ask for, we came in with that same amount and get told, no. So please tell me why other departments are better than the administrative and clerical departments when as a city, we are to be a whole. And with that, we weren't even important enough for the mayor, for corporate counsel, and for labor relations to stick around and hear what we had to say. But they knew we were here to speak on this tonight. And that's all.
Okay, so good evening. My name is Johnny McCombs. Um, I am a steward for APSME. I work right down the hall in Housing. So all of the grass complaints, why hasn't this building been demoed? What's going on with the garbage and the fly dumps? Come sit with me today and we'll explain it to you. Um, as my fellow members have said, we are the backbone of the, of the city. We are the behind-the-scenes crew of, you know, any motion picture or play you may go see. You see the actors on stage. We're the ones pulling the curtains and doing the lighting and the sound and costumes and all of that. Every one of our positions, we have rules and regulations, policies and procedures that if we don't follow them, the grass is not cut. If one button is not clicked, that order does not go. We follow those. We follow those in all that we do. We follow them for negotiations, sitting down at the table. And when we feel as if we're not being heard, we respectfully requested a meeting with the executive producer, our mayor. We've not heard anything. And this is not the first time that I have requested meetings in other aspects of my work and not been heard. And it hurts. It hurts to ask to be heard, to ask to speak to your boss and to be ignored. Not even told, not now, we'll get back to you, but nothing? That's hard. I love my job. I absolutely love working with the public. I love it. But the city as an employer has shown me on multiple occasions how little they can care about their employees. To the point that there is a new employee who suffered a tragic loss on a Sunday, showed up to work on Monday and was told you may not get paid for missing time because they have yet been here long enough to accrue a day. That's hard. That's hurtful. All we wanted was just to speak and see why. Why is it so hard for us to just get a fair contract and we don't even get a response? When we think we might get one, when we get the phone call from her office, it's not about us. It's about the issues at the garage, which was warranted. But do we have to use inappropriate language and call names to get a meeting? That should never be. Ever. This is heartbreaking. We do. We have members who work multiple jobs to make ends meet. And it's gonna get worse. We show up day after day. We don't do this job because we enjoy being cursed out from the public. We don't do this job because we enjoy the name-calling and all of it. I mean, I sit and I listen to the meetings and hearing, why isn't the grass cut? And we try, you know, why is there fly dumping? How do we fix this? We do what we can, but we're limited. But when we ask to meet, to have something done, we would like to be heard. We are all here away from our families tonight. We didn't want to have to be here. If we could have just sat down, we wouldn't have been here for this. But how else are we gonna be heard? This was just a request to speak, not even give us, you know, forty-eight million percent. Just hear us, talk to us, explain to us why. Nothing. And for me, it's not the first time. So I should have been shocked, but I wasn't. I wasn't. And that's heartbreaking. You know, we, I'm a team player. The Build Event a few weeks ago on the North Side, I worked tirelessly with community relations to get that together. And our members walked door to door that Saturday. Our members set up the tables. Our member had to order the tables to have our other members at the garage pick them up and deliver them for us to lay them out and then pack them back up and, and return them. You guys don't get toilet paper without us. We just wanna sit down and talk.
Thank you.
I don't have a lot to add that they haven't already said, and I'm not gonna say it as well as they said it. But just to build on what Johnny was talking about, the reason we came here tonight is that tomorrow morning, we're set to bargain again. The last time we bargained was almost a month ago to the day for our session tomorrow. At that last meeting a month ago, as Johnny talked about, we asked to have a sit-down meeting with, uh, Mayor Busher, uh, which has not happened. Um, we followed up, uh, every week. Um, we've got nothing. We've asked to have a meeting with the bargaining team, uh, we got nothing. Um, I did get a call within twelve hours of signing up to speak tonight, though. Uh, and they were very, very interested to know what we had to say tonight. And I assured, uh, Corporation Counsel that we were gonna be polite and respectful. We were here to be nice tonight. You know, we're not trying to point fingers or cast blame. We just wanna express what these members do for the city and ask for a fair shake tomorrow. Um, I'm not being as nice and they're not being as nice now because we thought at least one person that would be in the room tomorrow morning would still be here tonight to hear what we had to say. And it's hard not to feel like the reason they're not here is because we assured them we weren't gonna say anything too edgy or too off the cuff. So I think they've said better than I ever could. I don't work for the city, what they deal with. But I can't stress enough what they said, which is that everything that happens in the city of Springfield touches somebody in this local. They are the lowest paid. They're not very well appreciated. It's often invisible work, as they said, they're majority female. But everything, any permit that goes through, any work that gets done, anybody in this room that's holding one of those agendas, that agenda was put together by a member of this local. We have three locals in this city that this union represents. All three started bargaining at the same time, eight months ago. Thirty-four Seventeen, which is Public Works, we've got. 3417, which is Public Works, we've got a tentative agreement, which is a fair deal, it's not a Cadillac gold-plated deal, but it's fair, right? It's decent living wage adjustments. Same thing at 337 CWLP, which you guys will be voting on on Tuesday, we're hoping to have Public Works here a couple of weeks after that. What we've asked for, for 3738, is literally the exact same cost-of-living adjustments that Public Works is gonna receive as soon as we get that ratified, and the city has said, "No." And I don't know how you could possibly justify that. I don't know how, you know, when you look at all of the twenty-four contracts that this city has, the raises that the police got, which they deserved, which they needed, that the Fire Department got, which they deserved, that they needed, that the laborers have got, the teamsters have got, the operators have got, and then you look at even what their own sister locals, which, for clarity, if you're not aware of this, 3738 also has members at CWLP and Public Works, and I don't know how we could look at somebody in the same department of the same city, making ten dollars less an hour, and tell them they deserve a lower raise than the person next to them, because what? Because they're an office worker, because they're a woman, because they're a secretary or a cashier, and we don't think that's important? Well, we don't have revenue if somebody's not there to take the checks. So I hope somebody that's gonna be at the table tomorrow is maybe watching this on YouTube tonight, and we can get this wrapped up before Christmas, and if not, I guess we'll see you guys again. So I appreciate your time.
Anything else to come before this committee? I take a motion to adjourn. Those in favor say aye? Adjourn.